We have a motion for approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comments or discussion? All those in favor of the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting, state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Next item is the confirmation approval of the claims.
So in reviewing the claims for December ending, the total is five hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and six cents. Of that amount, Fund One totals three hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. That's about twenty-two thousand dollars more than we paid last year. There's a few reasons for that difference. The first, you probably noticed again, we have fifth third payments, and that's for the new credit card processing system that we have in place here. So those payments you're seeing on your claims report, for Fund One, that totals about a hundred and two thousand dollars. Overall, for all funds, that's a little over a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. That's offset by a Kemi payment. That is for our workers' comp. And so last year, we paid about twenty-six thousand dollars more. We had a reduction this year in our insurance, our liabilities that's due. And then also offsetting that is a first insurance payment for about fifty-five thousand dollars. And again, that's a reduction, I'm sorry, not reduction, it's timing of payment for our property and general liability insurance. We paid at a different period this time last year. So if you all have any questions about your claims, I'd be happy to answer that.
Two points, one on item, page thirty-two, the name is the Rick House. Was that a catered event?
It was. So our schools have different holiday parties for staff. It's not school funds that are generated. So what happens is if they have building rentals, things like that, staff contributions. This was for the high school specifically. They had their party at the Rick House this year.
Okay. And secondly, Madam General, I will be abstaining from the vote on the financials due to conflict.
Do I have a motion for confirmation approval of the claims?
Still move.
Second?
Second.
Second. Any other further comments or discussion? All those in favor of confirmation approval of the claims, state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Next item is the financial report.
So before you today, you have the financial reports for November two thousand and eighteen ending. The first item is going to be your treasures report, and you see there's a verified cash balance of seven million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. Beneath that, you see the different funds that that's distributed through. You see there's a large amount there in Fund One. If you recall, in February, we'll make that payment, or not payment, but transfer for the property tax, the nickels, that will transfer to debt service, that will pay our payments for our bonds that are outstanding. You see also, Fund four hundred has a large overture, so that'll cover that and the remaining payments that are due. And then also behind that, you have your balance sheets, as well as your monthly financial report. This is a slow time as ever, that it is in school finance, so I don't have much to report to you today. But I wanted to give you a tax update. So through last Friday, we've collected eighty-eight percent of real and tangible property tax that were issued. That's the same amount as was collected at this time last year, so we're pretty much on track. So we've actually collected seven point five million dollars of the eight hundred and four million dollars that was issued. The balance is approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the majority of which will be collected before January second, which is when the penalty period will begin. And then also, even though it seems really far away, this is the time of year that we begin to develop next year's budget. There's a requirement for the board to review the draft budget by January thirty-first of each year. Dr. Clark and I have had several discussions over the last month, and then we'll also continue to develop the budget over the next several weeks, and you'll receive that draft budget at the January regular board meeting. This information's always very primitive, due to many unknowns, such as enrollment, next year's needs, current year ending balance. So broad projections are going to be used at this point in the budget cycle. But then as we go through spring and get closer to the tentative budget that's due in May, we'll get closer towards the working budget. Those estimations will firm up for September. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Sure, you're very welcome.
Next item is our superintendent's report.
I'll have a couple of things to share with the board today. And I, so guess, you guys be patient for just a moment, you'll get to hear the first part first. As you all remember, this is the third regular meeting in a row where I have shared a different standard, the superintendent's standards. And standard three is what I like to describe for you and give you some evidence of today. So standard three is cultural leadership. To provide a summary of that, superintendents understand and act on the important role assistance culture has in the exemplary performance of all schools. They understand the people in the district and community, how they come to their current state, and how to connect with their traditions in order to move them forward to support the district's efforts to achieve individual and collective goals. While supporting and valuing the history, traditions, and norms of the district and community, a superintendent must be able to reculture the district if needed, to align goals with the district's goal for improving student and adult learning, and to infuse the work of adults and students with passion, meaning, and purpose. I thought it would be very appropriate, and I guess my first comment on that description is, Bardstown City Schools is a very special place. This is a place that not only I admire and love being a part of, but I think that the vast majority, if not all, of those involved in this district would say the exact same thing. My responsibility is not to reculture a place like Bardstown City Schools, it's to make sure that we stay focused on those things that make us special. So there's been a number of things that I've done in my first few months as superintendent to support a strong culture, and have just about a minute and a half video that kind of gives you a glimpse of the different things that we've done. So that's just a very small sampling of things that, you know, we've been, we've been very purposeful about and celebrating, and there's many, many more that could be added to that, that short, quick video. But, but our culture here is very strong, very blessed to be in a place like Bardstown City Schools. So I guess now what I'll do is I will shift and share other things that are very special about this district, and that is that we have very dedicated staff that have achieved great things. So what I'd like to do is, if I could, invite Ms. Danielle Hill and Mr. Walt Evelyn, and then also Ms. Felicia Rudolph, just to step forward. And I want to share that Ms. Hill and Mr. Evelyn, that both have achieved National Board certification, which if I'm not mistaken, makes eleven nationally board certified teachers in our district. And then Ms. Felicia Rudolph is a real, real important reason why we're having such success, because this is a very rigorous process, and they maybe could talk just for a moment about their experience preparing and working through this, but Ms. Rudolph has mentored at least half, if not more than half, of our teachers that have achieved National Board certification. So before you guys share anything, I want to congratulate you, because that's an awesome accomplishment. So, Mr. Evelyn, the process for you was, I know, we work in the same school, I know you worked hard.
You saw the whole thing. This was four years long for me. Ms. Rudolph, I talked to her right when I started, because she was actually teaching my youngest daughter at the time, and she agreed to start reading my papers. I'm not a gifted writer. I would say I'm a gifted teacher, working with kids, I'm, I think, but I don't write very well, and she read everything I wrote, and wrote, and wrote, for years.
And years.
And years, and years. But in the end of it, one of the things that was difficult is we didn't know what the process was looking like, because they were rolling out the process as we were doing it. Every year, they'd say, oh, here's the new thing, or here's the new thing, or here's the new thing. My certificate is early adolescent social studies, so eleven through fifteen social studies. There are seventy-seven of us in the state with that certificate. I couldn't find any within about forty-five minutes of Bardstown that have that certificate, which made it difficult for Ms. Rudolph, because this is not her area. But she was dedicated, and one of the reasons she was dedicated is I had her son while she was reading. We just swapped. She helped Caitlin, I helped Elliot.
I don't think I said that.
I know my process was, it started at a point where we didn't have mentors, they didn't give us mentors when we first started, and then along the process, Felicia jumped on board and said, okay. And there were six of us going through the process at the primary school at the same time. When we got scores last year, I was two tenths of a point away from passing, and I thought, okay, what am I going to do? Am I going to throw in the towel, or am I going to keep, you know, trucking on this journey? And I kept going. And so when I got scores this year, I was nine points above what the score, you know, was needed. So this journey, it's been stressful at times. It's been moments where the kids are playing in the backyard, and I was sitting in front of the computer working. I can't thank my principals and Felicia and my husband enough, and the support that I had from the other five that were going through it, to say, hey, keep going, you know, it's worth it in the end. I feel that earning the National Board certification was a better route than just earning my rank one in a certificate that I wasn't going to use, because I love what I do in the classroom, and I feel that National Board has prepared me to dig deeper as a teacher, and really look into what we're doing instead of just doing it. You know, there's a process of why we do what we do every day, and National Board really helped to dig in and do that, so.
When I certified ten years ago, there was nobody in the district that was certified. And so I had to go to Lawrenceburg for my mentor, and she was kind of like Walt and I, opposite ends of the spectrum. She was high school English certified, so she had absolutely no idea what to do with me and preschoolers. But she could give me advice on my writing and whatever, what I was hitting on. So I was, I knew that with Walt, I could easily help him, because I saw that she could help me, she gave me that guidance. With the, the primary school is really fun, because they're all my certificate. And so it was fun watching where my kids are going, and how the teaching is still the same principles, but how you can teach differently, and what more you can do with older kids. It was really interesting to watch that. The process for me really changed who I was as a teacher, so I was really excited to be able to have more people join me in the district and go through the process, and change how they thought, and become better teachers, and think our kids deserve it, and it makes us better as a whole to have people that are really examining their teaching and what they're doing and why they're doing it.
Thank you, guys. You'll join me, and I congratulate you. Great accomplishment. Thank you very much.
Felicia, what grades do you teach?
I'm preschool.
Preschool. Right now, I'm doing special ed at the preschool, almost three-year-old for the preschool.
How many more in the pipeline do we have that are trying to be certified as well?
We have four at the primary that are interested, and three that we know are going to start the process in January.
We don't have anybody, Ms. Amy Adams is the only person other than me in the district who's certified above primary school, and to my knowledge, we don't have anyone else in the pipeline.
I think Amy's coming up for recertification soon. I think she was two years behind me.
And then Angel, Felicia.
And I don't think she's going to recertify.
Yeah, she doesn't have enough years yet.
So once you're certified, you have to continue?
Yeah, I just certified this year, so I'm good for another ten years.
And ours is five years. They changed, we were that new girl out, so ours is every five years we will have to recertify.
After my ten years, I don't have to do five.
Congratulations, good work.
I have a curly-headed girl, granddaughter in preschool, keep an eye on this one.
Reese.
Okay, yes, she's adorable. I help her off the bus every day.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
All right.
Sure you don't want to sing Christmas hymn? It would just be me, you don't want to hear that.
All right. Do I have any visitors to recognize at this time? If not, we'll move right on to our next item, which is the focus of delivery targets for the Bardstown Elementary School.
Mr. Courtney is going to share his ideas with us.
All right, so just to kind of piggyback on Dr. Clark, like, with his cultural focus, being the new superintendent, by the way, if you don't know, I'm Brian Courtney, so I'm the new principal at the elementary school, coming from outside of the district, by the way of Jefferson County. Spent two years there as administrator, was in Bullock for nine years, my first nine years, and then I spent one year in Nelson County as an assistant principal of the high school. So coming in, like I said, as a, as a first-year principal, so my, like him, my focus, one of my focuses is to focus on culture, because the staff doesn't know me, you know, so you have to build that trust and relationship with your staff members, and your students, and your stakeholders, like your parents, before you can move forward. Because my number one fundamental role is to drive student achievement. That's my role as a principal. So, so my two things that I'm going to talk about today is, like I said, instructional and then the cultural. So the mission hasn't changed at the elementary school, so through cooperative efforts of students, parents, staff, is educate every child while nurturing the talents and abilities of each student in a positive environment. So the vision is the same, it's the district vision. And then, so we kind of pulled a motto out of the mission, you know, with kind of staff input. So we have shirts that staff members, and we start the year with growing every student every day, live purple and gold. So that's our motto at the elementary school. So we try to tie, regardless whether it be instructional or cultural, we try to tie everything back to that motto, which, like I said, growing every student every day is not just focusing on academics, it's also focusing on coping skills, social skills, just giving them what they need, whether it be, you know, clothing, or, you know, just a hug, you know, but focusing, like I said, growing those students, trying to help them be better future selves, is what, is what our goal is. So coming in, and it's my staff, so I'm kind of presenting this to you all as well, like my core beliefs as a principal coming in, so culture before everything else, which is the brand. You see now businesses, but now schools have to brand themselves, because you have choice. You know, school choice is an option. So you have to brand your school. So, you know, coming as a new principal, like I said, I want to build a place where people want to work, where they want to attend, send their kids to school by being honest, transparent, communicating with everyone, and not spending time on the distractions, like, you know, whether it be with educators, what's going on with the pension, or just things at home, like, we can't focus on those things, because those things are distractions. We can only focus on what's going on in our building at that current time. So number two is support, retain, recruit good teachers and get out of their way. Let them take risks, it's okay to fail. You learn from failure, so that's one of my big things. So if you have a staff, you know, and you create the environment that they're uptight and they're scared to make a mistake, then you don't, you don't create the best possible goals that you can create for, like I said, your staff members and your students. Now, we are lucky, and kind of coming in, learning, we're lucky at Bardstown to, you know, this is a place where people want to work. You know, so like when we have an opening at the elementary school, you know, I wasn't used to that, thirty, thirty-five people applying for the job, whereas coming from Jefferson County, you're lucky to get one good applicant. So people want to work here, so we want to retain those good people that want to work here. Three, focusing on test scores, and this is my belief, is a malpractice. So I think developing future lifelong learners is the goal. With the accountability system, you know, always changing, you know, it's easy to get caught up in what's the test scores, what's the test scores, what's the test scores. You know, that's a big part of it, but if you just focus and teach towards a test, because you put so much pressure on your teachers, you're not developing those lifelong learners with students and your staff. Number four, celebrate students and show them their successes often. And you'll see, as I, as I go forward with my presentation, you'll see ways that we do that. And then every kid knows, needs to know why they matter, and their future matters. Once again, it's, it's that caring about and growing every student. All right, so this is kind of my, my culture piece, this is kind of something I hang my hat on, but culture is like a fragile egg, and if you drop an egg and it cracks, there's no fixing it. So you basically, a lot of times, have to get a new one. So a lot of times, we focus on everything that goes on, whether it be site-based teaching strategies, Chromebooks, thinking strategies, audits that we have, college and career readiness, CSEPs, so we, a lot of times get focused on all of these things, and this, we have to focus on culture before we can get there. So that's why I say, by celebrating all our successes loudly and proudly, by any means necessary, every single day, in every decision that we make, that's what influences a positive So these are, these are just some new things that I kind of created whenever I came in. So we have like a tiger ticket system, and so teachers, they are given two of these per week, and they can give them out to any student that they see, and it's, you know, doing the right thing, regardless of what it may be. If it's holding the door for another student, then the teacher can just give a student a tiger ticket. And not only are they giving them a ticket, and it could also be a student maybe who's struggling with work, doesn't have a strong work ethic, but then they, you know, one day they come in and they work real hard, well, you want to reward them right there for that. So these are just some things, so they can accumulate their tickets, or they can turn them in to me. A lot of the, the most popular one, I'll just tell you, is the three tickets, the free snack or drink, they're always bringing, so they work hard to accumulate those three tickets. Now, once you accumulate one ticket, we basically cut their name off, and then we have a drawing. So we have a third grade drawing, fourth grade drawing, and fifth grade drawing. So we do that, so we draw two names out every Friday. So we make it a big deal. And then if your name gets drawn out on Friday, then you have a variety of prizes that you can choose from, like paint a block, and you'll see that in a minute. The week dress down pass is a huge one, but you can see, all of these things don't, it's not monetary cost. So it's just something that kids really like, that some of them kind of chose, so that's why we have those options on there. So, like I said, we make a big deal about the tiger ticket drawings, so like on Fridays, like I get on, like, it's like a starting lineup for basketball, so we play music, and it's amazing how quiet the building is whenever I get on announcements, and then when somebody's name is called out of the room, it just erupts. Like, I can hear it from my office, I can hear the screaming coming out of the office, and then here come the kids. So, like I said, that's just part of working hard, and then rewarding them for their, like I said, hard work. So it may not be a kid that's making always, it may be somebody that has Cs and Ds, but, you know, is working hard, pushing hard, struggling, but they're still, you know, being caught doing the right thing. So then, like I said, whenever we do that, we post to social media, and I'll talk about that as we go forward. So kids also receive the T-shirts, which it's just a tiger ticket winner T-shirt, as you can see, and it's something that we say on announcements every day, be kind, be productive, and be awesome. So they also get the shirts that says that on the back. Like I said, so we post to social media, and like I said, we celebrate student success at NOSIA, because now communication is on the net, and we use that social media via Facebook as a platform to tell our story about our students. So that's one of the options that they can have, is to paint blocks, and they won't go anywhere. So this is like a tiger ticket wall. So like I said, these walls won't be painted over, so there's more and more kids that are starting to add to them. So these were our first two. And you can see that this student right here, she's proud to be a BES, so I mean, that was what she painted. And so you, you see that a lot, and like I said, we are trying to build those, ones are tiger, always a tiger, so, you know, starting at primary through the elementary, middle and high. So, like I said, that's a good, it's a good thing, and they love it. So the next thing is celebrating staff members. Not only do we celebrate students, we celebrate staff members. So Ms. Sanders, she's one of the board staff members now, but she was our first employee of the month. So the way we pick that is I send out a survey with nominations, and so the staff sends me nominations, and then we just kind of sort through on who has the most, and, you know, what effect they had that month on students or other staff members. So like I said, we post this also to social media, we give them a certificate, and then we have a plaque, as you can see, that's hanging up in the front office, where everybody can see it, so then it just has their name on it. And this with our staff is probably my, my most favorite thing, enjoyable thing to do, like on Friday afternoons when I'm there at five or six o'clock. So throughout the week, we have staff shout-outs. So I have a form that I send out to the staff members, and they can send it back to me with staff shout-outs. And basically, they're just celebrating some, another staff member's, you know, just something that they've done for them during the day, or something that, you know, they've done good during the week. And this just builds morale within your building, within your staff. So, like I said, this was, in interviewing the staff members, this was a big thing that they, they liked and want to, want to continue, but I have anywhere between thirty and forty responses a week, just on staff shout-outs. So we're looking at doing some type of student shout-out as well, but we just, we haven't got there yet, so that's, that's kind of one of the things that we're going forward that, because staff shout-outs is working so well. All right, so the instructional part, like I said, so that was kind of our things that we focus on culturally. we focus on culturally, and now let's get to the instructional focuses. So being like I said, as a new principal, like I want to see, you know, how, how the teachers teach, if there's, you know, any areas as a whole, you know, that we struggle at, or we have some weaknesses, and what our strengths are as a staff, and that just helps, you know, develop professional development and training for those teachers as a whole. So we have instructional walkthroughs, and basically those walkthroughs are 10 to 15 minutes. So I have my own leadership team, which consists of myself, my assistant principal, and my counselor. So we do nine, three each, so we do nine walkthroughs, like I said, we have 39 teachers, so we do nine walkthroughs per week, and we have our admin meeting, leadership meetings on Monday mornings, every Monday morning. So we discuss our walkthroughs that, that we go in, that we, you know, that we're watching, like I said, we have a focus, and I'll show you the walkthroughs in a minute. So we discuss those walkthroughs and just what we, what we saw, you know, the week before on that Monday, and then so we use that as coaching sessions with the teachers, not necessarily I'm coming in and, oh, I caught you doing something. We are coaching them, you know, to be better teachers, or like I said, those areas. So two areas that we are focusing on based on those walkthroughs is questioning techniques that extend learning and promote higher level student thinking, so not focusing so much on recall questions, but focusing more on that deeper level, that deeper, deeper learning questioning techniques. And then the other is formative assessments, so making sure that we are assessing every day at the end of, at the end of each lesson, okay, what kids, what kids are struggling, so we know right then and there what kids are struggling with the lesson, so we can try to intervene. So the teachers were a little nervous at first, but now that they see that, oh, we are coaching them and not evaluating them every time that we come in, so they're a little more comfortable with it, and now are seeking input and advice on what to do. And so my next, our next instructional focus area is vertical alignment with the primary and middle schools. So I, I had a conversation with Ms. Taylor, you know, about some of the areas that sixth graders may be struggling with coming in to middle school, so that just kind of started that conversation with us. So now we're going to have vertical alignment meetings where fifth and sixth grade math and ELA teachers will be meeting, actually on January the 2nd, and the same thing with second and third grade. So basically, those discussions will center around what knowledge and skills the students, what must they know, and when they come in for that, that next grade level. And then my last thing is focus groups. So focus groups, so we, we kind of went through like our math data, and teachers, you know, had to, we have a great staff because there's several teachers that volunteered to work with these students, these focus group students on their plan, which they did not have to do that. So, you know, when we talk about great staffs, BS has a great one. And so basically what focus groups consist of are 20 students in each grade level, third, fourth, and fifth, so 60 total students, that are just right there on the cusp of mastering those standards, they just need a little bit more support from a certified teacher, and not a computer program, and not an instructional assistant, but from a certified teacher that knows the content just to mask, like I said, to master those standards and to get there. So that's the basis of our focus groups, and then those students, their data is monitored monthly with pre and post-assessments. And as you can see, this is our, this is our walkthrough tool, and like I said, we just go through, and it's observed, not observed, and not applicable for the day, or at the time period that we're in there, and then we just write notes and questions on the side, and then like I said, we just have a five-minute meeting with each one of those teachers to kind of reflect on the learning task, or the, like I said, instructional walkthroughs on, on things that we saw, or things that we needed to see. And like I said, right here is kind, this is our, one of our areas of focus is just avoidance of recall question, like I said, that's that deeper, deeper level, deeper learning questioning techniques that we're focusing on. So just in wrapping up, and like I said, the reason why we really use social media as our platform is because if we don't tell our story on the net and on the web and on social media, then someone's going to tell it for you. So, you know, we try to, try to put it out there ourselves. So, you know, social media is an insanely powerful culture piece, and then we use it for communication second. And I haven't met a teacher, parent, or student yet that hasn't found positivity and interaction on social media or the communication wise. So like I said, in the age of school choice, we have to protect, protect our brand, and like I said, our brand is Barstown City Schools.
I said in a PLC meeting, and the teachers talked about having a list of best practices. Do you still have that, or is that, have you heard, have you seen them or heard of them?
Best practices? Yeah, I mean, yeah, and there's several books out there with, you know, those strategies, best practice strategies, and when you talk to teachers, whether it be, like I said, questioning, there's best practices, routines and procedures, there's best practices. So yes, that is something that we do talk about and discuss, and we actually, you know, based on literature and research, you know, we try to create our own list.
Thank you for having me. All right, our next item is the school year 2018, 2019 comprehensive district improvement.
Mr. Beck.
If you didn't come far, did you?
No.
I'm going to try to use this wireless mouse from here. Normally in our presentation, what we do is we give you the actual CDEP for your approval, and then we have a separate sort of presentation that condenses it down to these are the facts, and just the facts. We're going to go in a little bit different direction this year, I want to kind of show you the entire document, but I'm just going to highlight the components that are different this year. So every year for our school improvement plan, we have to address these five components: proficiency, gap, graduation, growth, and transition readiness. So I'm going to go through each of those right now. The first one is the proficiency growth. Now what you'll see here is we'll have a goal that'll take us all the way out to 2030, we have to tie these to our state strategies, we have to tie these to our state activities, and then here's our one-year objective, this is what we want to do this year, and then these are the activities that we're going to have this year, and then these are going to be the measures of success. Now in our internal documents, we'll also have all of our progress monitoring, what we'll be writing, this is great, we need to look at this, wow, that didn't work, we need to go backwards. But for your purposes, I think this is the one we really need to focus in on, because these are the actual things. Tell me, what are you going to do? And so what those are right here are, these are some things that we're going to be working on this year. Some of these things are extenuations of things that we've begun last year, if not previously, and one of these in particular, our focus groups, is now five years old, and we're doing some refining with that. In some cases, we're stepping back a little bit, so let me go ahead and start with our first one, which is common benchmarks assessments. What we're doing this year is at all grade levels K through 12, we're taking a look at our common benchmark assessments. You might remember them as unit tests that a teacher would give at the end of a teaching unit to see how well the students did. We have common assessments so that the end of that unit in first grade looks the same, whether it's in your classroom, your classroom, or your classroom, and we currently have that in our district. What we're doing now is we're going through a process to refine those for rigor, meaning do they actually meet the level of the standard? Are they too easy? Are they too hard? And alignment, meaning here's what you assessed, but is that what the standard said we had to assess? So we're looking at those two things, rigor and alignment with that, and we'll be doing that comprehensively K to 12 this year, and we'll be looking at what changes we want to make for next year. The next one is our focus groups. Our focus groups will continually go through revision process, probably one of the two biggest revisions you'll notice this year is we've got specific special ed focus groups, that was something we did not have before, they were embedded into all the focus groups, we have pulled them out and made a specific special ed focus group. The other thing you'll notice is we've moved a lot of the data to reporting a lot sooner. We had done it just each semester, then we had done it quarterly, and now we're doing it unit-wise, so we sped up the data process with that. With our special education, this is a new one to address our TSI designation, we're looking at the special ed program, top to bottom, front to back, we've had CKE's consultant, Ramona Karzner, come in and have her give us her overview, she's already done visits at primary, elementary, middle, high, is that correct Lance? Sorry, I put you on the spot, I'll keep going. She's given us some feedback on different things such as how we do scheduling, how we're doing co-teaching, and what our next steps could be for that. And Lance has, has organized that entire section of that for the special ed review. Then the next thing is our PLCs, again, this is a continuation of one we've been working on for several years and refining it. Some of the things you'll notice different this year in our PLCs is we have an admin PLC, where we have admin PLCs such as Mr. Courtney with his admin staff and Ms. Spalding meeting every Monday, to have a tighter continuity between what's going on at the schools and what we know about here at the district level, too. And then lastly is student advocacy, we're in the second year of developing that, and each of the schools is developing their own brand of student advocacy, such as at the high school, which is one of the more successful ones, they've developed the ACES program, you might know that, it's the program that most recently had the career exploration day, December 5th, I believe it was, and so ACES addresses academics, community, economics, and social emotional, and it's something that they do once a week for the students to advocate, for each of the students to meet their needs, and again, this ties into what Mr. Courtney was talking about, meeting needs beyond just academic, what are their social and emotional needs, too. So these are all of our current activities that we are going to use to address our proficiency goal. Now again, I told you there were five goals that we had to meet, a lot of these activities will overlap, so I won't go over all of the ones that overlap. So for our gap goals, we have the same activities, because those address proficiency and gap also. When we get to graduation, we have some similar activities that we had previously, but we also have two different new ones that specifically hit just graduation. First one is credit recovery, we've had some changeover with staff and the program that they're using, Plato for credit recovery, and we noticed that we weren't achieving the credit recovery as fast as we usually do, we do a very good job of tracking that, so we immediately jumped into action, and we got Plato to come in and retrain the staff top-down, and so we've set up some new goals for that, and we're getting back on track with our students doing credit recovery, we found some holes that existed, so we were very excited about Plato coming in. The other one is our new district truancy officer, you know him as a former mayor, Mr. Bill Sheckles, and some of the amazing things he's doing with community outreach and reaching out to the students and building those social contracts, so that we can increase our attendance rate, which is very good by the way, too, it's about at 96%, but another barrier to graduation. Then we get to growth, the activities will be the same as gap and proficiency, and then lastly is transition readiness. Again, those activities will be the same as gap and proficiency also, but one that speaks specifically to transition readiness is our work that we're doing with the new skills for youth grant, you may remember that presentation several months back, that we were going to participate that with Nelson County, LaRue, Washington County, and Marion. We have now gone through almost a half a year cycle with that, and it looks like we're going to have four areas of increased pathways that will help our transition readiness for our students. And those four areas are the addition of a teaching and learning pathway, which that will actually occur in our high school, it will be housed at Barstown City Schools High School. The other three will be nursing pathway at the ATC, they're going to increase that nursing pathway, hopefully leading to an LPN. The third, second one is the welding pathway, they're going to increase the welding pathway, and I do pathways there also at the ATC, and the last one is the engineering pathway, they want to expand that and even add a new teacher, which will allow us new pathway options for our students. So we're going to have four new pathway options for our students next year, and at least three of those pathways will have dual credit opportunities, too, so that'll add even more to our catalog of dual credit, career readiness, certification, and AP course offerings, which we have a very extensive catalog. And I believe that is the last one. So in a nutshell, this is our entire CDEP for the year, you can see some things, they're a continuation from previous years, some things are brand new for this year, it just depends. One of the great things about where we are as a district, when we have to develop our certified, classified plan, is that we don't have to make a lot of overall changes, we need to continue on with some of the things that have been very effective, our academics are in a very good position for us, so we do a lot of refining and tweaking, we've had to sometimes a back step, as you always will, when, you know, you're a district of innovation, we're going to make mistakes, but overall, we're very pleased with where we are, and that's why you'll see a lot of repetition within our certified improvement plan. Any questions?
I saw Superintendent Clark, I think, on Facebook getting stuck at the...
Yes.
Did he? How'd that go?
Getting stuck? Oh, yes. So, you know, I'm a team player, so we have, we have, have a student, a Barstown student, that's taken some phlebotomy classes, and she needed to practice, so I offered my arm so that she could practice.
He was a great team player.
The recent headlines about KDE changing the graduation requirements as far as, we talked about refining and tweaking, is that, is that going to go beyond refining and tweaking when they implement these things?
That will definitely change some things for us. Big picture first and foremost, it will allow some flexibility in scheduling with us. For example, the courses in math that they have to take, or the courses in ELA that they have to take, some of them are less defined, meaning you have to have, of course, one, two, but three and four are up to you. So we'll now be able to use options such as medical math for the phlebotomy courses, those can be used as part of the graduation requirements, so it's going to allow us some flexibility and different options to get kids in the pathways that they, that they need.
So it's really going to be a good thing, not necessarily a burden.
Yeah. When you transition, that's going to be the difficult part, because we have some, they're still over the old one, but our incoming freshmen, it'll allow us transit, it'll allow us a lot of flexibility for them, yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim.
And we do need an approval for that.
We do. So do I have a motion for approval of the school year 2018, 2019 comprehensive district improvement plan?
Save.
Okay. All of those in favor of the approval of the school year 2018, 2019 comprehensive district improvement plan, state aye. On the opposed, motion carried. Next item is the WHAS Crusade for Children grant.
All right, good afternoon, I guess it is afternoon now. Glad to be here with you guys today. I'm coming to you all to request the board's approval to apply for the 2019 WHS Crusade for Children grant. As you might recall, this is something I do every year around this time, and this year, we're kind of continuing on our tradition of innovation, excellence, and diversity in exceptional child education. I think that's one thing we're very well known for in this, in the community, it's something that we've been able to really go out on the ledge with several of our projects because of Crusade for Children funding, so I'm just going to go through with you guys what we're going to be asking for this year. And one thing that comes to my mind when we talk about this program in particular, and our kids here, or any child, is why I feel when you were born to stand out, our parents are, you know, very proud of the things we do, and they've kind of come to expect certain things out of our district, so these funds have kind of helped us allow to continue either maintenance of those projects or addition of new projects. So the way I decide and kind of think about what might we need or what might we want as a school district, is I really sent out, I sent out a survey to our special ed staff, and I said, here are some of the things I'm considering, what do you all see as needs that could either enhance the services we're already doing, or provide new experiences for kids? Some of our more recent projects that you might remember are the playground space, the new playground space at the elementary school, that was funded from the Crusade grant, the indoor McDonald's play place, it's not really for McDonald's, but that's what it looks like, in, in the preschool, and then also our middle school snuslin' room. Well, what we're looking at this year is to add a snuslin' or sensory room at the preschool, the preschool is the only location in our district that doesn't have one, we've identified a small area where this would fit, and we're going to look at doing that, since the preschool is the starting point for many of our most severe children with disabilities, or most at need children with disabilities in the school district. The other thing we're looking at doing is updates to our snuslin- The other thing we're looking at doing is updates to our snoozlin' room that was done through Crusade funds at the primary school in 2011. That room's coming up on eight, almost nine-years-old, and like any piece of technology and any item routinely used by kids, there are parts that are either starting to break down or that are kind of losing interest and just not as functional as they used to be. So, we're looking at replacing some padding in there as well as selecting some new items and opportunities that are more current, currently available, and new offerings for kids. And this, I want to give you just kind of an idea to refresh your memory on what I'm talking about when I say snoozlin' room. These are, this is particularly the latest room that the Crusade funded, which is at our middle school. This is shared between middle school and elementary students. It's a larger room because it is shared between two locations, and it's actually located right in the catwalk that connects those two buildings. But this is what I'm talking about when I say snoozlin' room. It stands for a Dutch word that essentially means "too calm," and the primary focus is to kind of put a child at ease, get them at rest, help them, provide some sensory input that can be relaxing during a time of the day where they might need such an opportunity. So, that's kind of what we've already got going on in our district schools. And what I do whenever we say, okay, we know we want this at the preschool, we know we need to do some updates at the primary school, I actually worked with Greg Spear, I'm sorry, Aaron Hunt at the high school, and he came over and did some drawings and was actually put, able to put some things together on CAD for me, which we were then able to transfer to the company, which is Flag House, who does these type of rooms, and they were able to give us a drawing of what the preschool room could look like. And what I have on here is just examples of different types of activities that would be in here, mirror ball, or a projector, Little Peanut, I thought that was just a nickname for me at first, but apparently that's an actual seat that they offer. This is a bubble tubes and so forth, and I think you guys have this in your packet as well. And this is the primary school. We already have a great space at the primary that we've been using since 2011 for this, and we already have several great pieces that we're going to be able to maintain, and those are outlined, I'm sorry, those are in red parentheses. So, anything that has a red parenthesis behind it is items that we already own and we will be able to keep. So, you can see the primary room is getting several new updated things. Some of the things we're going to have in both of these rooms that I thought would be neat to give you guys a little bit of a snapshot of are going to be shimmering light curtains that are these right here. These are fiber-optic lights that students with autism and other developmental disabilities really enjoy. It really brings a calming sense to them. This fiber-optic light spray would come off the floor or could come from a wall for students who are more mobility impaired, so they can actually drape that over them in a wheelchair or some other form of alternative seating. We're going to have waterless rainbow tubes in this one. One thing that was, our OTs who maintain these rooms were very adamant about is if we get new bubble tubes at the preschool, which we don't have any, or if we needed to get new ones at the primary school, can we please do waterless? Because like a fish tank or anything else, you've got to change out the water regularly. So, we're looking at some waterless tubes. We've got learning panels. These panels are going to align some of the walls, and they just kind of provide different sensory and motor input for kids. This is called a multi-finity explorer panel, and this is, with each one of these buttons, a student can activate a new light and sound activity within this panel. There's also going to be, it's also going to be switch adaptive for those students that can't get out of a wheelchair and get down to do it. We'll have some that we can actually set in their lap that they can manipulate and work through with. And this is a fiber-optic sparkling tunnel, the one we hope to get is going to be a little bit larger than this, but a lot of our kids with autism really enjoy those tight and enclosed places where they feel like they can get a little bit of alone time, if you will, and a sense of calming. So, we're going to have one of those, hopefully, in our primary room, should you guys approve our request to apply. The amount we're requesting from the Crusade totally is roughly $38,000. The snoozlin' room at the primary school would be around $20,000. The preschool would be around $14,000. An installation for both the preschool and the primary classroom would come around $32,000. Depending on the level of involvement of the electrical that we need, our own staff may be able to do some of this. I've talked to the director of, Mr. Newton, Director of Maintenance, so, for a little bit about it, and he thinks there's some things they'd be able to handle, but just, I want to play it safe and go ahead and ask for that money from the Crusade, just to go ahead and have an accountant for, because of the way it works, if you don't ask for it, they won't even consider you for it. So, the overall amount requested is $38,000. Typically, we get around $30,000 every year, and what I will probably do, what I've done in the past, is based on the amount we get awarded, my staff and I will go through and kind of decide, okay, what are our priority items, and then kind of back it down from that. There's a chance that we'll have other funds available, maybe some IDEA, which are federal government preschool funds that we might be able to offset some of the cost with, or funds through Medicaid reimbursement, that if there's items that we're just shy of being able to get that we think would really be beneficial to the rooms, we may still be able to do some of that. So, in closing, what we are essentially, or what you are essentially committing to as Board of Education today is allowing us to approve the request of grant funds from the WHAS Crusade for Children and agreeing that we will maintain items, just like I'm talking about, changing water, providing updates, changing light bulbs, all these things that go along with owning any piece of technology. So, that's what I'm asking for today, is your board's approval to apply for the grant and hopefully making it happen.
When do you hear back from a grant?
Good question, yeah. So, typically around, it's been as early as May but as late as June. I love the May date because, you know, everybody's still here and I can kind of coordinate, okay, can we get this done over the summer? So, I'm hoping for May, but they guarantee by end of January. And what, the way it'll work is from, I'll apply before mid-January, actually, I'll probably work on it over Christmas break, and then in March, I usually get a letter that says, hey, we're interested in your grant, you need to come and defend your grant to a panel similar to you guys, and I'll do a presentation and bring it, talk about the things we've done in the past, always try to throw in some Mama quotes and that sort of thing, that they love to hear about, you know, why we need the money. But they've always been historically good, very good to us. But we do a lot for them, too. We do a 5K every year, we do a coin war, we invite them out anytime we open a playground or a snoozlin' room or a room at the preschool. So, they're, they love coming to Barstown. I'm actually emailing back and forth right now with Larry Ledford, who's their, one of their media liaison, and he's trying to get a calendar together, and I'm trying to line up some photo shoots with kids and parents for him over the, over the Christmas break.
Thank you. So, do I have a motion for approval of the 2019 WHAS Crusade for Children Grant applicant?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. Any other further comments or discussion? All those in favor of the 2019 WHAS Crusade for Children Grant application state aye. All those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you. Afterward, I'll tell you the page for your side of the board chair. Thank you.
Great. Next item is our first review of the 2019, 2020, 2020, school calendar, oh my gosh.
Kind of weird, isn't it? So, first of all, you know, there's, I just want to remind you of the change a couple of years ago in the committee that was mandated to be put together for every school district, which we were already on board with that. We did add the, a board rep, and Mr. Robie has been doing that for this year and last year. So, there is a committee. It's made up of principals, parents, teachers, classified staff, and community members. There's about 11 of us total that have come together. I will say on the calendar that you have in front of you, you have two options. I just wanted to reiterate the fact that we did work, not just with our own people of getting these options together, but with the Nelson County School District. I've been working pretty closely with Jessica Sokolski, she's the new DPP in Nelson County. So, along with having some questions just about the job, we've been able to talk through what the calendar kind of would look like, knowing that we want those calendars to match up as best they can for folks that have kiddos, grandkiddos, in each district. So, we've worked closely with them, with the ATC and the Area Tech Center. You guys know how many kids now we're sending out there and how we need our schedules to be as close as possible to, for us to be able to take advantage of that tech center as much as possible as well. I'm not going to go into all the days because you know that there are many days that are mandated by the state that we have no control over, we just must follow the rules. I do have two committee members, actually, Greta is on that committee, and Mr. Robie is on the committee as well, so they'll be able to answer any questions. We have been, met together a couple of times where we sit down, kind of hashed everything out, looked at a, basically, the two options that I told you about, and you have those, I think, in front of you, but option A was basically a starting point for us. That was kind of a mirror of the current calendar that we have right now with not a lot of changes to that. That had us at a ending date or a starting date of August the 1st and an ending date of June the 4th. We presented this option. We let the option go back to all stakeholders, so if you were a teacher rep, you were supposed to get this to all teachers for them to see, get their feedback, same thing for, best we could for parents and classified staff and things of that nature, which we've been able to do that as well. We did get a lot of feedback after that, and that is what led us to option B. So, if you will pull the option B part up, you will see there were, there were some changes. The major, the major change was for us to find four days, the June 1st through the 4th, we were able to put into the calendar or take out of the calendar somewhere, maybe a professional development day, a snow makeup day. We were able to take those out and put us with a ending date of May the 29th. There are other factors that go into this. The testing window even comes into part of play here because we test the last 14 days of our school district. The month of May has two days there that were out. May the 19th is a, is an election day and the 25th being Memorial Day, so we have to take those days into account when we're backing up our calendar and looking at when we're going to have the testing window. So, many factors have gone into this. There's been a lot of, well, there's, I won't say thousands, there's been hundreds of emails back and forth between myself and some committee members. Can we do this? Why can't we do that? Again, a lot of those are mandated days that are in the calendar. This is part of the new, a new part was we would have a first reading. I used to bring you the calendar. We would show it, we would talk about it, we would approve it. We must have a first reading, which is what I'm doing today. And then, it looks as though the feedback that I've received, that most folks are looking at option B as the route that they, they want us to take right now, that is not set in stone. I will be bringing that back to you for final approval in the January board meeting. But I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have about the two calendar options that you have in front of you or stakeholder questions, anything like that.
No questions, but yes?
The reason the 19th of May was xed out, I'm sure you all are aware of it, because we have a voting precinct, two of them in our school, and we can't, if, we could have school in the other schools that don't have it, but we elected not, just to let everybody out.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. H.
Okay.
All right. And the next item is the CMTA, notice to proceed.
So, you guys heard the presentation during our special call meeting today. What this motion does is it just allows them to get some verbal commitment from you. This is not a contractual commitment at this point, just so that they can continue to do their work. If there were any chance of us getting any of these projects taken on in the summer, this was a necessary step. So, this would just be giving them notice to proceed so they can continue with their work.
Do I have a motion for approval for the notice to proceed?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any further comments or discussion? All those in favor of approval of the CMTA, notice to proceed, say aye. All those opposed, motion carried. Next item is the BG-1 Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract.
So, kind of the same, some of the same things that have already been said for us to even have a possibility or chance of doing some of this work in the summer. It's necessary that we submit a BG-1, that's, you're all familiar with that, to do various projects. That, that BG-1 is, includes all schools as a possibility, that can be refined, it is not set in stone, but we need to have something in place if there is any chance that we're going to do any of this work this summer.
So, the narrative for the proposed project is not set in stone?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion for approval of the BG-1 Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any further comments or discussion? All right. All those in favor of approval of the BG-1 Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract, state aye. All those opposed, motion carried. Next item is the 2019 Board of Education Regular Board, Regular Meeting Date Schedule.
So, for as long as I know, the board has met on the 3rd Tuesday of every month at noon here at Central Office as its regular meeting location. So, there was, I think, a memo that was provided for you that would lay out those various dates, how they fall on the 3rd Tuesday, assuming that you would want to continue the noon meeting here on the 3rd Tuesday of each month.
All right. Do I have approval for the 2019 Board of Education Regular Meeting Date Schedule?
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comments or discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approval of the 2019 Board of Education Regular Meeting Date Schedule, date, time, and location, state aye. All those opposed, motion carried. Next item is the travel authorization.
So, you would have in your board packet, I believe, there's just one trip, and that's for the Barstown High School Science Olympiad, hoping to go to Tennessee, to Lincoln Memorial University, so that they can participate in this event. It is not an overnight trip. It's approximately, the trip is for February the 2nd for 25 students that would be taking a regular school bus.
Okay. Do I have a motion for approval of the travel authorization?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further comments or discussion? All those in favor of the travel authorization, state aye. All those opposed, motion carried. My next item is the leave of absence request.
So, there's just one leave of absence request that you should see is for FMLA, would be effective January the 2nd of 2019.
Do I have a motion for approval of the leave of absence request?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the leave of absence request, state aye. All those opposed, motion carried. Personnel, retirement, resignation?
Just to make you aware, we had one retirement and two resignations. That information is in the board packet.
And your site base council minutes are in your packet also for your review. Do we have, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Make motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Any further comments or discussion on that one? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. All those opposed, motion carried. Meeting adjourned.